This is the regular meeting of the City Council in the city of Waverly, Iowa. Today is Monday, June 15th. It is seven o'clock and we are called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you keeping score at home, we are one councilperson short tonight. Councilmember Kengis is on family vacation in Scotland and Finland, I think. So he's probably having more fun than we are. You have in front of you, council, an agenda that has been prepared for you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Council, you have in front of you minutes from the July 1st, 2024 regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the July 1st, 2024 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. This is the time to welcome our guest councilperson for July, Jared Geier. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I hope you have a fun and enjoyable night.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. At the end of the meeting, I'll invite you to have any comments you want to share. We are now on item F. We are going to have a public hearing because this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for review of the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs for the tail race wall removal. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would rise to this topic? Anyone who would rise to this topic? This public hearing is now closed. Council, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd move approval of Resolution 24-128 approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for the tail race wall removal.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I suppose I should point out that the expenditure on this is listed at about $154,000. The source of funds is $300,000, which is those bonds. I'm assuming there are other things that are going to be funded from this bond other than just this tail race removal.
This particular piece will just be the tail race. As we talked about in the last meeting, there are other items we can go forward and use that for, but it has to be substantially significant to the bonds that were already issued. It cannot just be for anything out there.
Right.
And that'll be dictated by you as a council when we get to that point.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I'd point out, too, that this cost has come in about half of what was estimated last year.
Yeah. They were very aggressive on this bid. PCI is already here on the bridge, so it made sense for them to be aggressive and take the rest of it since they're already mobilized.
Yeah, probably would be much more expensive to someone else to come in and do it while that's going on.
Right in the middle of their project, so yes, sir, I think it would be.
Any more discussion? You appear ready to vote? This will be a roll call vote. Please help us out.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously at six-zero. We'll move now to item 1A, Resolution 24-129. This is awarding the contract to Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa, for the tail race wall removal. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-129, a resolution awarding contract to Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa, for the tail race wall removal for the bid amount of $105,352.50.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Who am I going to give that to? There was three when I heard.
Well, let's give it to Dr. Roffey.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? Really? Okay. Carla, would you help us out?
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kengis? Oh, sorry. Missed that one to take off. Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
And Bergen?
Yes. That passed unanimously at six-zero. Now is the time for public comments on items which are not currently on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted. If anyone would like to comment now, please stand and rise towards the microphone. I see no one rising, so we'll move on to consent calendar, which is item H. Council, you've got 14 items here. Each and every one of them interesting, but you want to take them on block and can have a motion to approve the whole batch.
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. We'll move now to regular business. If anyone here wishes to speak to any item on tonight's regular business, please stand up and come to the microphone before we get to that item. That's only so that I know that you wish to speak and I can call on you, giving everyone a fair chance. We're at Resolution number one? I'm sorry. Item one, Resolution 24-123. We're approving fiscal year 2024, 2025, community marketing recommendations and contract with Ambridge Marketing and Fundraising for continuation of the community marketing plan. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-123, a resolution approving fiscal year 2024 to 2025, community marketing recommendations and contract with Ambridge Marketing and Fundraising for continuation of the community marketing plan for the amount of $51,560.
Second.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to rise to discuss?
Good evening. What you have before you this evening is a marketing plan and a contract with Ambridge Marketing for continuation of the Waverly Welcome Home Community Marketing Initiative for fiscal year 2425. As you're aware, we took a pause from our community marketing efforts last year due to budget challenges. At the budget meeting in January, we reviewed the website analytics that showed the impact of that pause, which was significant, and funds were again budgeted to resume the community marketing activities in fiscal year 2425. The marketing plan before you tonight details how we plan to move forward with Waverly Welcome Home marketing using funds budgeted for that purpose. Some of the highlights of the marketing plan include a new focus on the video assets. We plan to pivot from the testimonial visits used in the past featuring one person or one family's experience, and instead we will shoot three videos that tell a community-based message, using two to three people in each video to talk about the opportunities waiting for them in Waverly. These will be one-minute videos with 30-second knockdowns, and these will be used on the website and also in the media campaign. Digital ads will also be refreshed to align with the updated videos, images, and messaging. And we're going to implement a new strategy with these ads to direct users directly to the Waverly Welcome Home website from the ad rather than to a landing page as we have in the past. This ties into a larger strategy we have of providing a more broad message and also offering more information to users once they click on that digital ad. Also, the Waverly Welcome Home website will be updated and refreshed to include a few new features. A short, fillable form will be added to the live here, work here, and play here pages, where users can indicate that they would like to receive additional information around specific topics. These form completions will then receive a customized but automated response through email with links to resources related to the items that they indicated interest in. So for instance, they could indicate that they're interested in outdoor recreation in Waverly, and so they would get an automated response that would maybe include a link to the trail map and just some other outdoor activities or whatever it is that they have had indicated an interest in. In addition to that automated response, Kate and I will also be notified of what their interest was, what the response was, so that we can send a more tailored message to them if we feel that that's appropriate for that situation. I will mention that this feature is being added largely in response to the Chamber Main Street Organization's decision to discontinue much of their tourism programming. So this is one way in which we can get that tourism-related information out to people who have indicated an interest in visiting Waverly. Additionally, on the website, a new section will be added to the top of the live here, work here, and play here pages, so that the related video and also the form mentioned above will be shown very clearly at the top of that page. So when they click on the digital ad for either live here, work here, or play here, there's a very visible and accessible at the very top of the page where they can click for that information. So once we shoot the videos, we update the digital ads, and we make those enhancements to the website that I just spoke about, then we'll be ready to move forward with the digital marketing campaign. We have a pretty aggressive timeline. We're hoping to complete all of that production in about five weeks and then be able to start deploying the digital campaign. Nick Harvey is here from Ambridge Marketing. If you have any questions or want to talk a little bit about the digital strategy, it's all detailed in your packets. But basically, this is a continuation of our previous strategy, which is to drive traffic to the website using digital marketing assets. So did you have any questions for me or for Nick? Did you want to hear more about the digital campaign strategy?
I just want to add for the people keeping score at home that you are Connie, a city employee, your lead of the economic development team.
Thank you.
Any questions, friends?
I thought the packet laid out pretty well. I mean, it was obvious that the numbers, the visits plummeted when we weren't doing, you know, the aggressive marketing, so it looks like, I thought it was well-written.
I would agree. The only thing I would say is, so of course, I went to the Welcome Home Waverly webpage and checked it out. Looks great. I'm looking forward to seeing our new accessible playground down at the Ball Diamonds to be featured once that's finished.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I, yeah, I'm going to cast a protest vote tonight, and I'm going to vote no on this. Not because I think this is a bad project or I have any concerns about what we're doing with this project, but my concern is that we no longer have an Economic Development Commission, so we have no citizen oversight on any of these programs. Now, this is really, bringing it to the council is the only oversight there is on this program. And to tell you the truth, even reading through all of this material and having the discussion tonight, there really isn't the ability for this council to get really in-depth into what this program is going to do and whether that's the direction that we want to have things done. So I'm also, you know, I've always had some hesitation about the efficacy of this program, if it really is doing what it says it's doing. I know there's a lot of data that says that, but this data is coming from the people who want us to approve the program. And I'm not saying that it's being fudged or that it's being manipulated, but I think that it would always, it's always good to have some oversight when these programs are being done, so that there is an independent body that is looking at this and saying, yes, this is where we want to go with what we're doing. So once again, I'm going to vote no, not because I'm opposed to the program or I think you, that you guys have been doing a great job on it, Connie in particular. I don't want this to be any kind of reflection on your work at all, and certainly Ambridge does an excellent job. I've always been very pleased with the work they do. So this is really just a protest vote, not a vote in substance against the program.
I just want to say, I think, like a lot of city programs, I think we trust city staff, or at least leave it to city staff, to overview this program and make sure that it's doing what we want it to do. I think that's part of your responsibility is, you know, being our expert on economic development. It was my recollection that, as needed, James, you and Connie plan to involve citizens, you know, when it's pertinent and when they can give feedback. And so are there, is there going to be any community input other than, I mean, people will need to be interviewed for the videos and filmed, and so are there opportunities for community input?
There will be opportunities. Those are opportunities for involvement, certainly. But no, we didn't plan to run it by a citizen group again. This is a continuation of a strategy we've been doing since 2020 with just some updates in response to, you know, some changes around us in terms of what other organizations are doing and picking up that work. So no, it was, it would be myself and our department and our consultants at Ambridge.
I guess I would add that I think it's part of our job as council members to be paying attention and to be putting some effort into paying attention and finding out what is being done and subsequently how effective it is. I guess I have to say, going through the packet, I felt like I'm better informed than I was when the efforts were being done by two different organizations. It's just my feeling about it. I think oversight is always important and good, but I think that's part of our jobs.
I spent quite a bit of time this afternoon looking through the website, and it's a good website. It does need to be updated. There's new information to put in there. But the money's coming from the hotel motel tax, and that's, I think, what it's designed for, is to encourage development and tourism. I think everything's in place. Well done.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? You have anything else, Connie?
No, I don't. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. You have a motion in front of you. It's been seconded. We're on the table. Are you ready to vote? It's a roll call vote. Carla?
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
No.
That passed at five to one. We'll move on to item number two. This is Resolution 24-124, approving purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, an SCBA, for the Waverly Volunteer Fire Department. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-124, a resolution approving purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, for the volunteer fire department from Feld Fire of Carroll, Iowa, for the purchase price of $34,815.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. We're on the table. What do you have to say?
I have nothing. I came last time and had no answers, and so they sent me back again. But I'm a little better versed this time, so if you have questions, I can probably answer them.
Thank you.
It's a timing issue. As I said, we ordered these multiple months apart, different fiscal years. They happen to come in all at once. That's why you're here. It's within budget. It was always budgeted, but it's a landing in a different fiscal year, which we will correct the amendment in May, but that's why it's on here, else it wouldn't have been on here. It's well within budget, so.
And we actually saved some money because we purchased the last 10 prior to April 1st, which they typically have price increases then, so.
Yep.
I was just going to ask for a reminder of what's the expected lifespan of these?
The tanks, the tank, the packs are probably about a 10 to 15-year. The pack actually holds the tank, and the tank, as long as it'll pass testing, we can keep using them.
Okay. So it's not, you don't have them on a regular rotation that we replace X number each?
I think we're going to probably look into that so that we don't have to purchase so many at one time.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's like a lot of things we've done, you know, you get a good deal, you get a grant, something comes through, you do everything at once. Nothing, well, in 10 years, we're going to have to do it all at once again. So our goal is to get past that, so we don't have that coming up every year.
How many do you need at one time, Kevin? How many people do you need to be able to outfit?
Actually, we have 24 packs, and we have 48 bottles. So each pack will hold two different bottles.
Okay.
And we have, I think, 35 guys. I can't stand them, so I give mine to someone else, and they have four bottles now. So, yeah, it really, you know, how many we go through on a day or in a call, it just depends on what the call is and what the requirement is for breathing apparatus.
But you do run into upgrades, things like that, where the parts are no longer available. We've held some of these long past that point. We need to get out of that to where we're not continually being forced to replace. We want to be at a rotation where they're getting close to being done, but we're not forced to have to get rid of them. And I think that's a program we're just starting, and it'll continue forward.
And we want to make sure we have top-notch equipment. I'm going to scrap on that.
Then we do. Thanks to you guys, so we do appreciate your support.
Well, I speak for the whole council when I say we very much appreciate the volunteer fire department. You guys are brave and do really good work for us.
Well, thank you. And one woman.
That's good.
We do have one, you do have one woman. So guys and gal.
Guys and gals. Yes. Katie Hurd.
Yes.
All righty, friends. Any more discussion? You appear ready to vote, and this is roll call vote. Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed six-zero. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
We're on to item number three, a discussion of 10th Avenue Southwest traffic. Mr. John Campbell?
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Campbell. I am residence at 1001 10th Avenue Southwest. My wife and I have resided there for approximately 26 years. We have been property owners in the city of Waverly since 1971. The purpose for me coming to you tonight on this agenda item is for a couple of things, personal safety and public safety. Some of the information that I was able to gain off of the websites and Google has been given to each of you. I believe it's, and I won't state this correctly probably, but it's from chapter 105, and then they, the different ones, each of the pages are either highlighted with items that I hope to point out to you or that will spar some discussion as to why. And I would like to, at this time, thank the council and city staff for taking the approach of being positive and not reactive to certain things that come up within the city. Approximately four years ago, I came before the council to request a decrease in the speed limit on 10th Avenue. Since then, I've also found out that because I brought it up at public comment, there was no action that, or questions that could be asked. I was told that someone would get back to me. And since I have no political ambitions, I don't plan on running for office. If what I say is not politically correct, I apologize ahead of time. But no one got back to me. Since that, I have had personal property damage. I had a vehicle totaled while turning into my driveway. It was a ticketed offense that the gentleman who rear-ended me was traveling at about 50 miles an hour. Since that time, we've had a lot of things come up. The extension of the Cedar River Parkway. You've had the addition of the Ball Diamonds. Those of you that don't know or maybe just haven't kept up on it, we've had a significant increase in the traffic that is going to the ethanol plant, that is going to the bean-crushing plant, and that go to Menards, the production capacity over there in Shell Rock, which used to be the old Shell Rock products. They manufacture four Menards and are shipped throughout the United States, blocks, patio blocks, et cetera. So the traffic in, on 10th Street has significantly increased, and I would like to address, or have the council address the fact that some of the items that I have highlighted are what I want you to consider. On this first page inside the cover, which that cover page is from directly in front of my house, that hole is large enough that if you've ever had a tire that somebody said you had a broken belt on it, that will cause a broken belt in a tire. It has been that way for nearly two years, and it is one of only probably 15 or 20 within a quarter mile. Some of them have been patched, but patch is exactly what it is. It's a Band-Aid fix, and for speeds of 45 miles an hour, it's not going to be easily corrected. But in the, as I understand it, the speed restrictions, it is already stated in here that 25 miles an hour is a residential district and business district unless taken out, which it has been for 10th. 10th is residential and commercial properties on both sides. On the second page in here, you'll see that we have a fourth street, which is, as easier described from Burger King Hill out to Technology Park, a 40 mile an hour speed limit. Yet 10th was designated 45 miles an hour. Not sure why, and this particular was revised in September of 2023. I know why it was revised, and that's because of our two new schools. But what I don't know is why no one looked at the situation with 10th, or was it just forgotten that a request was made by a public citizen to have it looked at? Because at the very least, a decrease in the speed limit, I feel, is needed on 10th. We've got an increase with the school bus traffic that's going to be covering 10th or on 10th. There's no two ways around it when you've got the new school opening out. I believe it's, I'll not say it, why, it's the west. It's out by the sale bar. There's going to be more traffic on it. So why we're keeping that speed limit at 45? And for those of you who have not been in a situation where you've traveled on it, I am saluted nearly every day because I refuse to turn into my driveway from the west at 40 miles an hour. So when I slow down, it seems like either I'm cutting somebody off, or so they feel, and they're not willing to sacrifice, so they will sometimes make it around me, and they're doing well over 45 in order to do that. On another page in here, it does lay out that the city council shall have, upon the basis of engineering traffic investigation. I'm not sure how we can clarify the traffic investigation. I can't give you an official count, but I made some calls to the ethanol plant and to the bean crusher plant, and got some numbers of their total units traveling from the east. By personal count, I am now at approximately 18 to 20 semis per hour. By personal count, I am now at approximately 18 to 20 semis per hour. Both of those plants are 24-hour operations. We're adding more kids' traffic on there. We've done a wonderful job with the trailway, and we've got it crossing over. In my understanding, it will eventually go on over to Shell Rock, not knowing when that's going to come. But the ticketing, as I understand it, and it does specify in here that speed limits are that, not suggested they are the speed limit. But no ticketing will be done unless it's 12 miles an hour over. That means if you've got a semi that wants to speed, he's going to be doing approximately 57 miles an hour. They are carrying an average of 80,000 pounds. And in the fall, with the approval of the governor, they do get an extended weight limit, which takes them to 90,000 pounds. You're not going to stop a semi if a teenager coming from the high school forgets that he should have waited another 10 seconds to pull out from 16th on the 10th. And if it hasn't been seen before, I can almost guarantee there will be a death involved in that. Plus, we have kids that live in that area. This morning, I experienced it personally, that a, I'm going to say teenage, was probably going to the high school, probably for sports or whatever related, and they wanted to cross 10th to get over to the bike trail, the sidewalk, whatever the correct name for the sidewalk is. That person would never have been seen because they did not have the correct reflective, they did not have lights on their bike. That doesn't alter the fact that a vehicle doing 57 miles an hour would have gotten stopped as quickly as they could have got out into traffic. So first of all, I want the council to consider a reduction in the speed limit on 10th, and I would request that it be dropped to 35. Part of that drop speed is because from my residence at 101 10th Avenue, excuse me, 1001, it is the only street in the city of Waverly that is a two-lane, that has a 45 mile an hour speed limit. There is no other street. So I would like to have that considered, and someone telling me why we can't do it. On page TC 26 of the handout, I am also going to ask the council, the city, to enact a street embargo. You have the power to do it. 80,000 pounds on that many semis per day are tearing up 10th. To the best of my knowledge, and I have reached out, and I'm not going to say to who, but to city staff, to try and find out if there was ever any state highway funds paid for on 10th. I have found that, no, there was not. So for us to endure the demise of our street because of the truck traffic, I don't think is something we should stand for. And the only way you're going to cut it down is to put an embargo on it. And you can, in fact, do that. And then the other, it just tells you, it's easy to do. You put the embargo, put the signage up there, that's what it is. I have just a couple other items, and I'll let you folks ask me if there's any questions I can answer for you. I've come up with discussion many times now about the curb that is used on 10th. You'll see on the last page, and this is once again a Googled site, it addresses the purpose of a vertical, which is exactly what has been used on 10th. It is called a non-mountable curb. And this is to discourage several things, but discourage vehicles from leaving the street or the highway, but that in, it is not recommended for high speeds. 45 is supposed to be the highest speed. Otherwise, there is potential for the vehicles to even become airborne and do rollovers. If you want to personally go out and inspect it, I would welcome you. You're welcome to pull in and park in my driveway. I have no problem with it all. But if you want to look at what a mountable curb is, just go south on 4th, all the way out to 29th, you will see the difference. It is a mountable curb. It is intended that if you are forced off the roadway, you can drive up onto the shoulder, or you're not going to abruptly hit it and have a rollover. Final item I want to bring up is on approximately the 1st of August. I've been told that we're going to have the Bremer Bridge, Bremer Avenue Bridge reconstruction started. And the given detour has already been Prairie Parkway and 10th Avenue. Once again, I've reached out, but have not gotten answers. There was a, and this, I'm sorry, my resources and funds for printing out all this isn't quite as great, but I did get a copy. This is called "The Development of a Method to Determine Pavement Damage Due to Detours." This was done by the university, Iowa Department of Transportation, and the highway research. My understanding is that we should have either had the state do it, or the city should have done it. There should have been a scoring of 10th Avenue condition before the detour. Because if you're going to have detoured traffic on that road, from my understanding is somewhere close to 15 months. If I'm wrong, that, I apologize. But if you're going to have that used as a detour, why are not we setting ourselves up to have the DOT pay for those repairs? Thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I feel very comfortable in answering them.
I've got one question for you, John. You mentioned that it was a policy not to write a ticket unless the vehicle was going 12 miles an hour or more over the speed limit. I didn't see that in here.
No, that, that's because it's not a written. Speed limit for ticketing is determined by our police department. And it's unwritten. But yes, I have gotten that from more than one. Whether they determine that it's not worth ticketing or aggravating the general public because they forgot to leave five minutes early, and they have to get from the east side of Waverly to the west side, perhaps. But from a safety standpoint, is it going to take a death of a child or someone to be injured? I don't know. I personally have gotten ticketed for less than 12, not in Waverly. But I know for a fact that Cedar Rapids is the same way, if you care to look into it. I happen to have two police officers that are good friends, and absolutely. Matter of fact, the cameras are set up so that they don't even ticket you unless it's 12 over. So the 12 over is kind of a quote rule of thumb.
Well, the new state law doesn't allow a ticket to be issued by a speed camera unless a car or vehicle is going at least 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So that, you know, that state law, that's not set by Cedar Rapids.
Do you see any speed cameras being located on 10th?
Not yet.
Will you get one?
I don't think we're allowed to by state law at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions that I can try to answer?
I just had a question about the semi trucks. The numbers you gave, could you repeat that part again? Were those the trucks that are currently leaving the ethanol plant, the bean-crushing plant?
Going both directions.
On 10th?
Meaning, on 10th, that is correct.
And they're, they're taking that road to get over to Highway 3?
Yes.
Okay. So if we embargoed that road and wouldn't let them on there, where would they go then?
Well, without, without, without the bridge.
Yeah.
There's a problem.
Right.
But Highway 3 goes through Waverly.
Right. So we'd send them through downtown, is what you're saying?
Absolutely. And that's where the highway dollars come into Waverly, is for 3. Their, their maintenance dollars go to Highway 3.
So when you said 18 to 20 trucks per hour?
That is correct.
And, and I think you said you were getting some of that information from those plants, right?
What I did is I called the plants and talked to them about their average number of semis per day, and that, then I said, how many are coming from the east, west? They didn't really want to give me that exact. But personally, I've sat out there and grilled my steak, well, hamburger, excuse me, and counted them. And I've done it more than once. And one afternoon, I was out there, and in 45 minutes, I had 15. So as I stated, I was under the impression we were going to get a traffic count on 10th and Parkway. I wanted that traffic count to include separation of truck traffic and passenger cars. Because I did not count, in my count, anything that wasn't a semi. I didn't count straight trucks, I didn't count gravel trucks, and they're all using it for the same reason. It's a whole lot easier and faster for them to travel from east off of 3 to get onto 3 on 10th. And I would invite the entire council, if you want to come out during a study session, I'll provide you with parking. And I can guarantee you, it won't take very long, and you will see the numbers. And I think just good common sense states that the city, city council, has to look at not only the safety, but of the deterioration of the 10th Avenue. I didn't mean to be, take quite this much time, but it has been four years, and I certainly hope we can get something done. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Pete Lampkin, and I think I just want to be a historian. None of the members of the council were on, when the 10th Avenue was installed, James wasn't here. Mr. Prusels was here, but that's the only person in the room other than me. When that design was done to put 10th Avenue in that way, and they had numerous public meetings, design was laid out, it was set out over here in the room, and everybody in the neighborhood came out. The property owners on the north side made it known that they were going to do those as commercial lots. That's why there was also, in the design, was put to be limited accesses on the north side, that they had short frontage roads to combine lots and things. All the residents on the south side were told the speed limit was going to be 35 miles an hour, that that's what the speed limit was going to be. And I'll ask, I'll have to ask John, and John's friend, how many months was it after it opened that they went to 45 miles an hour?
Less than six.
Yeah. It was less than six mile, six months that the speed limit was raised by the council to 45 miles an hour, because the reasoning was, well, you're just intimidating traffic. Well, you look at the number of residential drives coming on to 10th Avenue, you need to intimidate the traffic. Those people have got to be able to get in and out. And John's a friend, I also have a couple other friends that live right there on 10th Avenue. And they have all told me of near accidents and everything else. And I would say, to go back to what the original design was on the road, and what the original promise was to those residents, that that speed limit needs to go back to 35 miles an hour.
So Pete, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
With that original speed limit, is that why they did those curbs?
The, yeah, yeah. That was part of, you know, that was part of the design.
Yeah.
That it was like, okay, the speed limits are going to be 35 miles an hour, and we can do those type of curbing.
And was there any discussion about limiting the weight?
The weight?
The weight of vehicles?
No, there wasn't any. At that point, that first design was just the 4th Street out to 3rd, and they weren't looking long-term.
Yeah.
Well, somebody was looking long-term at their full bypass around, I won't say what I call the street, I don't call it 10th Avenue, but it's a matter of, that original first section, residents out there were told that it was going to be a 35 mile an hour road, which would have been a safe condition for the residents. And like I say, like John said, it was a matter of, it was less than six months and it went to 45. Any other questions? As, as active as a historian?
Thank you, Mr. Lampkin.
Alrighty.
We have a short discussion?
So the other, the other handouts we got are those city-generated data. Was that from our traffic study we did last year? We have two other handouts that are in our packet. One is about data from a week in July last year, and then accidents.
The data would have been from Genoptik when we were looking at the traffic study for the lights.
The traffic, okay.
Then the accident would have been something that the chief put together at the time for a whole nother situation we were looking at. Those two documents.
That's from the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And do we have any accident data from after 2018?
We can get it. We haven't collected it.
But not compiled yet.
Yeah. I just had that together about why it could be worthy to talk about.
Sure.
Well, since the agenda does mention discussion of 10th Avenue traffic, particularly in light of the history that Mr. Lampkin had given us about that, and on that street a couple of times a day, I certainly think it would be worth taking a look at dropping that speed limit to 35, because there's been a lot more traffic on it, a lot more commercial development that has come in, a lot more traffic on the street. I think 35 might make some sense. I certainly would want to vote on that tonight. We needed to get a little bit more information and think about it. But one of the things that has also come up with, when Councilman Olfer was on the council, she several times brought up the issue of high school students entering 10th Avenue from the high school direction, from the north, and that that was a dangerous thing for them to do, which I understand, and there's not a whole lot that can be done in that corner, but perhaps calming the traffic a little bit with a speed limit that is not 45 miles an hour may help that situation a little bit. I don't know. As far as an embargo on trucks, my understanding was, one of the whole reasons we put that road in was to shut trucks away from downtown. I do not want to see a lot of semi traffic going through downtown on Bremer Avenue. And if it means that we have to do some better maintenance work, I'm not a road engineer, I'm not sure what that road is rated for out there, but if we're having issues with deterioration- deterioration because of the truck traffic, you know, then we need to fix the road, not necessarily tell people they can't drive on it. So I don't know where we go from here, but I would certainly be willing to take a look at the speed limit in that area from Highway 3 over to, at least to the railroad tracks. Where, where the road narrows down to just two lanes to go under the railroad track, that might be, because there would be no other entries or exits once you get past that going east.
Next week is a study session. If someone wants to present to Carla a resolution for the meeting after that, that would, that would bring it forward.
Well, I would like to hear some input from the police department and also from Public Works on the condition of the street out there. I haven't noticed the holes, but then it's hard too when you're driving 45 miles an hour. And I don't go 57 miles an hour on that road, but I do usually go 45, and I probably are, you know, don't even notice the holes that you can obviously see when you're standing right on top of them. So I guess I would like just a brief report on what the condition of that road is, and if we're going to have problems, because we're going to get some heavy traffic. This isn't the time to close that street now, not, not with the, the bridge going to be closed fairly shortly. This isn't the time to do that. But if we are going to end up having to do a lot of repair work on that road, we may want to think about talking to the DOT and see if there's some things that they can do on that, or if that's just normal wear and tear, the road's been there for a long time. I, I don't know what kind of condition it's in.
Justin, Director of Public Works.
If you do remember, we had a reimbursement agreement with the DOT just recently for this detour route. We use a gas tax method to calculate that. There's about, there's a handful of methods they can use for this, and that's the method they chose. Per recommendation of Oldham, we have, are documenting the road conditions right now before the road is used as a detour. At least that way we'll have some evidence. There are some areas in need of repair, I'm not going to disagree with that. But the previous discussions have been to wait for this detour is done, because why do the repairs now and then let a detour happen to beat the roads up some more? Why not just get it done at once when the detour is done? That was the whole intent going on along, previous staff and I have had those discussions, and that was the plan going forward. We actually have plans, measurements that were measured from previous city staff for a project out there to mention even what would take out there for a project right now. But we're kind of waiting through this to, in the detour time.
So just to clarify, you said, Justin, that you're doing sort of a baseline look at the road right now, so that then you can compare it to when the detour is done?
We're actually using a drone. We're going to drive, drive the road so we can document it, slow down and take snatchouts of the damage on footage. The other option was to use a Google-type camera from truck to document it, so you can actually zoom in closer. But we found with the drone, we can get really good footage. We're just waiting till as close as we can find out when the road is zooming up. Being August 1st, I found out, just like everyone else, we're going to be doing it here shortly.
Any other questions for Justin?
I don't know if it's a question for Justin, it may be a question more for Chief Purcell, but, I mean, we're talking, so first I will agree with Rob that I don't like the idea of trying to send more heavy traffic through downtown, in terms of the embargo. But even if we were to put in an embargo, how would we enforce something like that? I mean, we're not talking about putting weights on the roads, how would we identify the trucks that are exceeding the embargo? Would that be local police officer? Would that be, I know there's a division of the State Patrol that does like commercial vehicle enforcement, how would we enforce any kind of an embargo like that?
I would say if the city council makes that decision, it would be to the police department locally. DMT would come in, help us enforce that.
But, but how would you identify heavy vehicles?
By markets on the, on the vehicles themselves.
Okay.
They're weighted.
Okay.
They would just know. And then if we would have questions if they didn't want to violate that, we'd have to get sales.
Okay.
Chief, do you have anything else you want to add on this topic?
I'm not sure where the, we could not comment came from, but don't drive, you know, 12 miles an hour. You know, the speed limit is the speed limit. I am the Chief of Police and Director of the Police Department in Waverly, and there has not been any type of suggestion to officers to allow people to drive at 12 miles an hour with a speed limit. So if you were curious, we can certainly run numbers, because I'm sure everybody that's listening to probably knows friends and other people that got in the ticket language for less than a month long.
No.
I was not the Chief of Police at the time the road was switched, so I don't know in reference to, was it originally designed as a 35 or a 45? I don't have the answer to that.
I mean, do you have concerns about, you know, the, are there accidents at the pullout at 16th? And do you, do you think it would be safer to have a, a lower speed limit?
I would say.
And enforceable?
I would just have to say that I think if you moved to 35, it would be painful. And to make, to make people comply with 35 mile an hour on that road, I think we'd have to live out there. And I don't know, and John and I go back, we're 35 years together, good family friends, I just don't know if the data I have there has helped reducing it 10 miles an hour. We are intersecting with a, with 4th Street that is at 40. John and I have talked about this. I know one time I was on the phone with him, he was counting vehicles, I think he was at 12 or 14 when we were on the phone together at one point. So there is a lot of traffic, a lot of heavy traffic. He's right with that. I suggested that if there would be a compromise, would it make sense 40, if the council felt that the engineering kind of is needed to reduce the speed, because that would be consistent with 4th Street as that intersection as you married. But the accidents I had was, was from a different discussion, that was in reference to the commercial entries, where I just have to have that. And if you look at that, I grade out everything that was not 4th Street, or Highway 3.
Right.
Or a parking lot. And so the accidents are few.
Mr. Campbell?
One, couple of things to address. One of them is that I was a property owner when that street was reconstructed and turned into what it is presently. And absolutely was at the meetings for the design, and 35 miles an hour was what we were given as a speed limit. Now, you said you, Mr. Bonner, that the information you had was prior to January? Is that correct?
I didn't say anything about a date. It was from a traffic study from Genoptik, which would have been.
Oh, excuse me.
It was July of last year.
It was this July.
July of '23.
July of '23. For an example, the extension Parkway from 3 over to the bridge was originally discussed, and I was at many of those meetings, as being a bypass for Highway 3. DOT wanted nothing to do with it. They weren't going to put any funds into the bridge or the street. So why are you worried about what the truck traffic is going to do if you embargo it? You already have embargoes in Waverly. There is certain streets that have weight limitations. You have the only section from my driveway to 4th that is a 45 mile an hour two lane in the city limits residential and commercial business. Doesn't make sense that you're saying, we can't shut down that truck traffic on there. You certainly can, if that's what it takes. Because I don't think that you're going to be able to get enough out of the DOT to compensate the city of Waverly just for deterioration. They're going to come up with too many things, such as the drone footage, that's going to say, you already had a street that's beat up? Yeah. And since January, when the bean factory in Shell Rock went to full capacity, you just now added a huge amount of truck traffic. And it's all, as I said, it's because it's faster and easier. But Highway 3 has gone through Waverly for umpteen years. And when I was at the council meeting for the design plans of downtown Waverly, they already knew there was no Parkway. Where were the trucks going at that time? You think they were driving down and coming through Janesville? They were coming through town. So I think that some of the things that you're bringing up may make you feel better about it, but 10th Avenue needs to be addressed and without consideration of all the truck traffic. Thank you.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I think this merits further discussion. I think it's a substantive, substantive enough topic, and there's enough concern over it, that we should explore it a little bit more. Seems clear just from our limited conversation tonight that it's not going to be an easy issue, but I think we need to take a look at it.
Yeah, I think, I think what the chief said about having a reduction to 40 miles per hour should certainly be considered. I know, you know, the, the speed limit on the Parkway is 45. There are spots where it's divided, right? Near the cemetery, and then down toward where Foxes live, it's, it's two lane at 45. So there aren't as many residences or business entries. Yeah, I think it's interesting that the data we have from the traffic study last summer, and again, school wasn't in session, excuse me, and so traffic was down. There were, what, over 38,000 vehicles and about 250 were going 55 or over for that week. And so, you know, less traffic than during the school year. The, the semis, as John mentioned, weren't at full, full speed, I was going to say, at that point.
What do you mean, the 255? What are you getting?
Well, the 250.
122, right?
Well, but I'm looking at all of the speeds. So 55.
Yeah, those all add up to 122. That's the number broken down.
Okay, so the total is 122. Gotcha. Okay, okay.
So, I mean, it's about 0.3%.
So, you know, that's, that's less than what John says he's witnessed, but I'd certainly be willing to look at 40 mile an hour there.
I mean, I'd like to know where the changes would be. I mean, I would agree that, you know, that intersection at 16th and 10th is an intersection of concern with the high school there. But I also think that if you have, as you say, 45 at one end and 45 at the other, you're going to have a trouble, most people won't bother to slow down for it, I suppose are my thoughts. So, I mean, honestly, if we really wanted to slow down the traffic, put in a stop sign or a signal there. I suppose, I, this road was designed to be another east-west connector. We don't have enough, we don't want all of our traffic going down Brimmer Avenue. I mean, I'm thinking of the controversy we had when we switched from four lanes to three lanes, and, you know, that was kind of one of the main routes through town. That was, of course, before the Cedar Parkway was in place. Now that we have a second east-west connector, you know, I would kind of like half of that traffic on Brimmer Avenue to be using that other connector, so that neither road is being overdone. I, I don't want to conflate our topics, but our next topic is on, what, West Brimmer over by Pizza Ranch, and that's an example of a street that is being used as a connector. I think we have to account for where people are going to be driving. And if we try to enforce some kind of slower behavior, all we're going to do is be frustrating our residents and not really achieving what we're hoping to achieve. So, I mean, I, I fear that if we just kind of slap a slower speed limit on here, people aren't going to obey it, and people are just going to get angry and frustrated. So I think we have to do some accounting for human behavior.
I don't want to draw this out anymore, but the speed limit does go down to 35 before it reaches Highway 3. I'm trying to remember, is that before 16th or after 16th?
After.
West of 16th.
Okay.
It is 35 there?
Yeah.
It's 35, yeah.
A small part.
Yeah, a short part.
From, like, between 20th and 16th, like, like right through there? Or all the way up to there?
From about here.
Oh, for the, that curve is 35?
Because you got the bike trails.
Okay.
I travel that, this road, two to four times a day. I'm, I'm fine with the 45. I could see the discussion of maybe going to a 40. Definitely do not want trucks going through town. I mean, I'm a truck owner. That's, we're always looking, truck owners, truck drivers are looking for bypasses. That's, that's safety. The other thing is, we have to take some personal responsibility, too. We can't legislate every, you know, you can't legislate every tragedy away. Otherwise, we'd have to have the speed limit at five miles an hour. Or, you know, at some point, there's going to be accidents. I don't know 40, 45, if it makes any difference, but I don't see any, any concerns at all. And I, I drive it multiple times a day. I mean, you could, you could change the Brimmer Avenue to five miles an hour. That way, make sure we don't have any accidents. But you aren't going, people aren't going to be happy.
And people are willing to speed, no matter what the speed limit is. Unfortunately.
Well, and part of the reason that the Iowa DOT is not interested in that road is because of the railroad bridge there, which has a height limit that I think makes it in suitable for a state highway, because of that railroad bridge. You can't put certain trucks through there. Although, I may be wrong. I, I think it actually meets a certain height requirement, but I know there are also a lot of oversized loads that go down Brimmer Avenue, because they can't fit under that bridge.
Can you refer them to take 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, because I know there's a lot of people walking through downtown that aren't walking across 10th Avenue. I mean, the number of people I've seen dash across Brimmer Avenue in downtown, because they don't want to walk half a block to a crosswalk, bottles my mind, but I don't see those people crossing on 10th.
That's called jaywalking, and they could be taken, even in the city of Waverly. I think as a councilperson, you're not looking at it from the standpoint, that I'm a taxpayer on 10th Avenue.
John, can you come out, please?
I would be glad to. Once again, John Campbell, 10010th Avenue Southwest. I've lived out there. I've spent a lot of money on my property and on my house. My taxes have gone up quadruple. And you're telling me that an agreement that was made between the residents when 10th was put in should be just forgotten about? Parkway was not even considered, as I stated earlier, when the revisions to Brimmer Avenue were made. Parkway was not even sure it was going to go through. There was no funding, there was nothing. So how can you tell me that the semis were going to come down to Highway 2, 18, and 3, and turn at the top of Burger King Hill? They weren't. Not following me. Intersection of 2, 18, and 3, where is it?
Oh, I, I understand what you're suggesting. I just don't follow the logic that anyone ever thought that trucks were going to be turning at, at Casey's.
Exactly. So they traveled Brimmer Avenue.
Right.
Stayed on 3 all the way through.
But, but I think that for many years, the plan had been to put in that Cedar River Parkway.
And then it was abandoned, because there was no funding, no money for it.
Well, but I think, I think abandoned is a strong word. I think postponed is probably more likely.
Well, right now, it feels like the council is abandoning the thought of decreasing the speed limit, just because you're going to inconvenience speeders.
I, I think that's an overstatement. I don't think we're saying abandon it. I, there's been at least three of us who've said, let's, you know, we'd be willing to look at lowering the speed limit to 40 miles an hour. So I, I don't think, I'm not hearing that. I hear there's. I hear there's two separate issues. One is the speed limit issue, one is the truck issue. That's what I'm hearing.
If you slow down the trucks, then fine, but figure out how to fund the street repairs because it's not going to be just from this detour.
And that, that could be true. We don't know, right? We don't know what we're going to end up needing or getting from the DOT at this point. We don't know.
I'm saying after the detour.
Yeah.
You're not going to decrease the number of semis. As a matter of fact, I can almost guarantee you're going to increase it because those who didn't follow it and see how quickly they could get from east to west and were traveling, unless they had a downtown delivery, you'll never see them downtown again.
Let me suggest that we go ahead and just have a, prepare a resolution for the next business meeting, which will be the first meeting in August, so that we actually have something before the council that we can vote on and get an actual recording of what the council wants to do on this, whether it's voted up, voted down, changed, but we can discuss this all night and never really come to a conclusion.
I agree. Is that the will of the council?
I apologize for taking your time, but as I said, it's been four years that I've been trying to get something. Nothing's happened. Thank you.
Six years, actually. I remember six years ago, you were in front of the council saying the same thing.
It's age, I guess. I thought it was only four.
Time flies.
Is that the will of the council? You want to see a resolution in two weeks?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
In a while. We'll move on then to item four, the third and final reading of ordinance 1150 in ordinance amending Waverly Code Section 105.4.10 by adding subsection 60. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve the third and final reading, ordinance 11150, 1150, in ordinance amending Waverly Code Section 105.4.10 by adding subsection 60.
Second. Thank you, it's on the table. Any discussion? This is no parking by Pizza Ranch? Okay. Carla?
Karen Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
No.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed at five to one. Resolution 24125, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel EE, that's at 1410 Roundhorn Street, Waverly, Iowa. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of resolution 24-125, wait, no, sorry, to approve resolution 24-125, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel EE at 1410 Roundhorn Street, Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Okay, I just had confusion about this drawing.
Okay, so, so, as the person on planning and zoning.
Oh, yes, explain it, please.
Apparently, there's a pergola that they're putting on the property.
Okay.
And it is so close to the existing building that the setbacks for the building now apply to the pergola as well.
Okay.
So rather than move the pergola further away from the house, they have decided to move the property line five feet. So they own both sets of property.
Yep.
So they're basically just moving the property line to account for the pergola.
So my question is, on the diagram, is what is labeled as EE, is that the new property lines? I couldn't tell where the pergola's going on the, on the parcel EE.
Yeah, so basically, you have the dotted line.
Yeah.
And then you have the, the solid line below it.
Mm-hmm.
That's, which would be moving from the dotted line to the solid line.
Okay, thank you.
And this passed through planning and zoning?
Correct. Unanimously.
Okay, are you ready to vote?
Sure.
Carla, roll call vote.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
That passed 6-0. Item number six, resolution 24126, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel PP located at 809 Fourth Street Southeast, Waverly, Iowa. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 24-126, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel PP located at 809 Fourth Street Southeast, Waverly, Iowa.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Is that nice little land over by Southeast School?
This is the prairie and a little bit of trail.
We already maintain it, so.
And we had a vote on this a month or two ago that had to do with the maintenance, right? It was, did I do?
I don't know that we did.
I don't remember that.
But we've had some discussion about, this is school land, but the cities kind of take care of it, and this is basically just sort of trenching that a little more.
Yes.
Any discussion? You appear ready to vote? Carla?
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. We're on item eight, we're at resolution 24127, a resolution accepting the Harlington Cemetery Monument Restoration Phase Number Six as complete and approving the final pay request. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 24-127, a resolution accepting the Harlington Cemetery Monument Restoration Phase Number Six as complete and approving the final pay request in the amount of $3,800 to Mammon Monument Sales of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Any discussion?
They look good, pictures, it's helpful to have pictures. I mean, were you guys pleased with how it turned out?
This is Garrett, Director of Leisure Services.
Yep, we were very pleased with how this round went. And to be quite honest, we gave him 16, he did 17, so you better get a little bonus. And, yeah, even the pictures that I included in here weren't all the best ones. It was, I went up and caught the first five actors that I could, so, yeah, everything looks really good.
So how many years have we been doing this? Is this our sixth year?
It's not the sixth year. We typically have done one in the fall, one in the spring. I think we're about three and a half years right now because we haven't done one every fall or every spring. But then, period this last year, we've got another three years that we're going to contract with Mammon Monument Company, looking to do about 50 each year.
So is he going to do another set this fall?
He is going to start on some in the fall because this was actually, we were trying to, well, we did get it done, it's actually before July, so it's actually, we're just getting to it now to be paid. But, yeah, so he'll have 50 to do in this fiscal year. He's going to do some in the fall and then finish up the rest this spring.
So you said 50, 5-0?
I'm sorry.
5-0, 50?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because this, this is 1-5-15, so I wanted to make sure that my ears were right.
I'm sorry.
This is 15, right? Or, I guess.
Well, he ended up doing 17.
He ended up doing 17, but, yeah. I was just the 1-5 versus 5-0, making sure I heard you right.
Yes, we're looking at doing 50 per year for the next three years, right, right in that number anyway. It'll depend on how large some of the monuments are. Yeah, he's actually already got some more marked, we're meeting later this week to go over to see what he's going to do this fall.
Well, we've had some, some good results out of him. He's done it a couple of times before. I know we tried to go with someone else different last time, so I'm kind of glad we're going back to Mammon.
Yep.
I'll tell you, I was at Harlington Cemetery at 1 o'clock this afternoon wearing a black suit, and I can't remember the last time I've been that hot.
It was warm, wasn't it?
Oh, it was toasty, yeah. All righty, so, resolution 24127 is a roll call vote. Carla?
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Good night.
That passed unanimously. Which brings us to item 10. This is resolution 24131, a resolution approving a three-year agreement for a text alert notification system from TextMyGov. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to, move to approve resolution 24-131, a resolution approving a three-year agreement for a text alert notification system from TextMyGov of Logan, Utah for the cost of the services as a one-time implementation fee of $400 and, and annual fee of $6,500. Therefore, the first year will cost $6,900 and $6,500 for each of the two following years.
Second. Thank you. It's on the table. Justin, do you want to speak to this?
Coming off the flood, this has been very useful to push out notifications of predictions, other things like, you know, water service disruptions, garbage day changes. That's what we're looking at mainly to start these with. They can be morphed further into if more city functions or city departments want to utilize it. It's kind of, you can think it, you can dream it type thing with this. We can isolate sections of town, so if we have a water shutdown, we can correlate it on a map and only those people that are signed up in that area will receive the notifications. The initial startup will be from the USPS number. They basically send them out a text and they can opt in or opt out. And then it's going to be, just have to basically push it out through Facebook and, you know, notifications like this, people have to sign up for. We do get a lot of call for it, when people call up and ask about, you know, the holiday changes for garbage routes are the big ones, that people, I didn't know about that. Is there, can I sign up for an alert to let us know? Because not everyone reads Facebook, not everyone, you know, watches council meetings, you know, stuff like that where we notice all these things. But we put them in the paper, we do everything, but, you know, just one more avenue for us to get information out, and it can be quick information if we need to be, you know, for some of those emergencies.
Great idea.
Yeah, I'm surprised you weren't already doing it. I know I, I, you know, got some alerts about thunderstorm watches today, so, I think it's the exact same thing, just coming out of the city.
Any more discussion, friends? I hear none? You appear ready to vote? Carla, it's a roll call vote.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Good night.
That passed unanimously. So now we can move on to item 11. This is resolution 24132, a resolution approving Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT, Change Order Number One, approving an IDOT Change Order Number Two, accepting the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension Project as complete and approving Pay Estimate Number Five as the final payment to Lodge Construction, Inc. of Clarksville, Iowa. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve resolution 24-132, a resolution approving Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT, Change Order Number One, for a net increase of $846.50, approving IDOT Change Order Number Two, for a net increase of $1,140, accepting the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension Project as complete and approving Pay Estimate Number Five in the amount of $7,256.70 as the final payment to Lodge Construction, Inc. of Clarksville, Iowa.
Second. It's on the table. Any discussion? None? Carla?
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Good night.
That passed unanimously. Thank you, so we'll move to item 12. This is resolution 24133, a resolution approving a quote and purchase agreement for the Waverly Inflatable Dam Lighting from Musco Sports Lighting LLC and approving an installation quote from Tetro Electric, Incorporated.
I'll move approval of resolution 24-133, a resolution approving a quote and purchase agreement for the Waverly Inflatable Dam Lighting from Musco Sports Lighting LLC of Oskaloosa, Iowa, for a purchase price of $49,750 and an approving installation quote from Tetro Electric, Incorporated, Waverly, Iowa, for $6,850.
Second. Well, we'll give that to Julie. Any discussion?
There's been some people who've questioned the necessity of putting lights back up on the bridge. I think this is something that people will really appreciate. I think it's going to be a very, a very attractive thing for the city.
I don't think it is a necessity, but I think that it's money well spent relative to the benefit we will get.
Right.
Any, any other discussion?
The best part is it includes help, like, maintenance and assistance for several years in this contract, so that's nice.
All right, Carla?
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item 13, resolution 24134, a resolution approving a settlement agreement and release between Madison Clemsrude, the plaintiff, and Crown Point Investments LLC, that is Crown and the city of Waverly, Iowa, herein, hereafter collectively referred to as parties, for the consideration and mutual promises hereafter stated in the attached agreement. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 24-134, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Thank you, it's on the table.
It sounds like the dumpster rolled into someone's car.
Yep.
Is that basically it?
Somehow, we were partly responsible for that. I still would agree with it, but this is just to put this to bed, to be done with it and move forward.
It's $500 on our part.
I don't care if it's $5, it wasn't our fault.
I agree with that, but.
Going forward, we'll have documentation to make this never happen again on our end because, as it should have been, fine print, this is on your property, you've taken it out, rented it, it's your problem. So this will help us go forward with that if we didn't think we needed to. So Iowa nice isn't alive everywhere. We'll pay our share, we'll be done with this, I don't want to ever see it again.
Any other discussion?
I was a little bit excited at the prospect that maybe I could recoup some of the damage I suffered last year when my dumb Yeah, had to do it, I guess, so.
Okay, all those happy thoughts, are you ready to vote?
I'm ready to put it to bed.
Yes.
Carla, let's put it to bed.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Good night.
That passed unanimously, thank you. So we'll move to item twelve. This is resolution twenty-four, one-three-three, a resolution approving a quote and purchase agreement for the Waverly Inflatable Dam Lighting from Musco Sports Lighting LLC, and approving an installation quote from Tetro Electric, Incorporated.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-four dash one-thirty-three, a resolution approving a quote and purchase agreement for the Waverly Inflatable Dam Lighting from Musco Sports Lighting LLC of Oskaloosa, Iowa, for a purchase price of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and improving the installation quote from Tetro Electric, Incorporated, of Waverly, Iowa, for six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
We'll give that to Julie. Any discussion?
There's been some people who question the necessity of putting lights back up on the bridge. I think this is something that people will really appreciate. I think it's going to be a very, a very attractive thing for the city.
I don't think it is a necessity, but I think that it's money well-spent relative to the benefit we will get.
Right.
Any other discussion?
The best part is it includes help, like maintenance and assistance for several years in this contract, so that's nice.
All right, Carla?
Rocky.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item thirteen, resolution twenty-four, one-three-four, a resolution approving a settlement agreement and release between Madison Clemesrude, the plaintiff, and Crown Point Investments LLC, that is Crown and the city of Waverly, Iowa, herein, hereafter collectively referred to as parties, for the consideration and mutual promises hereafter stated in the attached agreement. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-four dash one-thirty-four, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Thank you. It's on the table.
It sounds like the dumpster rolled into someone's car.
Yep.
Is that basically it?
Somehow, we were partly responsible for that. I still would agree with it, but this is just to put this to bed, get it done with it, move forward.
It's five hundred dollars on our part.
I don't care if it's five dollars, it wasn't our fault.
I agree with that, but.
Going forward, we'll have documentation to make this never happen again on our end because, as it should have been, fine print, this is on your property, you've taken it out, rented it, it's your problem. So this will help us go forward with that if we didn't think we needed to. So Iowa nice isn't alive everywhere. We'll pay our share, we'll be done with this, I don't want to ever see it again.
Any other discussion?
I was a little bit excited at the prospect that maybe I could recoup some of the damage I suffered last year when my dumpster rolled into my car.
Your dumpster rolled into your car, really?
We'd have a conflict to make.
You didn't read the fight.
It never occurred to me that it wasn't my fault.
You should have dealt with these people, so.
And the wrong lawyer.
Carla?
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to fourteen, mayoral appointments. Can I have a motion?
I will move to approve the reappointment of Richard Palm to Waverly Municipal Airport Commission for a term ending May first, two thousand twenty-nine.
Thank you. Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. You have in front of you reports from boards and commissions.
My notes say roll call vote, but.
It is, but the mayoral appointments should be a voice vote.
Should be, yeah.
That's my mistake.
Okay.
Okay, reports from boards and commissions are in front of you. Is there any discussion or questions? James, that brings us to staff updates.
Yes, sir. Just a quick reminder, water service line inventory, we're still working on that. I'd like to have people sign up, call, you know, the website, just get it done. If you need any assistance, call out there or the website, I explained the details also. We got some out, but we need a lot more, so anything's called.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
All righty. City Council comments? Mr. Bergen?
Oh, gosh, there's so many good things. I'm pretty sure Ann will talk about Heritage Days, so I won't talk about that. But I am going to say it's nice seeing the progress on the Baskins Creek Bridge out on the rail trail, so they're making progress. Hopefully, it will be done within a month or so, maybe, or so, but looking forward to that being finished. And anyone who wants to discuss city council business, I will be at the wooden foot after the meeting.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the Waverly Shell Rock softball team on a very successful season. And then on a more sobering note, I was home, my hometown's Spencer, and I was back this past weekend, and saw their terrible flooding that most of you can relate to, and my mother and others, you commented, you know, wow, the town has really come together, and I was like, yeah, you know, Waverly did, too. But then, you know, that was, what, sixteen years ago, and we've really kind of come apart in that sixteen years. So I was just reflecting on that, driving back, and kind of feeling sad about it, actually, that it was great when we came together, but we sure are letting our differences come between us now. We just need to remember we're all citizens of this town, and this state, and this nation. And, you know, the attempted shooting, you know, this isn't the country, you know, we want to be, so we need to just, we can have differences, but we need to be civil, so that's it.
Ditto what Brent just said. I think that's really important, that we all make an effort to try to be more unified and accepting of other people's differences. And on a second note, since we have a date now for, or tentative date for the bridge coming out, I just wanted to remind everybody that this is a D.O.T. project, so the city doesn't have a whole lot of say or control over it, but obviously, I think our city staff is dedicated to do everything they can to make the process as easy as possible. But just to remind people that if there are questions or concerns or whatever, the D.O.T.'s driving the bus on this project. If there are concerns about, like, how do we function as a community with the bridge out, I think it's very appropriate to direct those to city staff or council members. Certainly, I think I can speak for all of us, that we care about that, and we want to do everything to make it as easy as possible. And if you have concerns about downtown businesses, those are probably best directed to the chamber, who is putting together, you know, plans to try to make it as easy as possible for people and businesses. So understand that all three of those parties are integral to the process, but they don't all have all of the answers. So if you've got questions or concerns, don't hesitate to reach out to the appropriate parties.
Thank you. Councilperson Drago?
Yes, well, one of the things that people have been asking me a lot, or not a lot, but multiple people have asked me this, and it does deal with the bridge closing, so it's probably appropriate to bring that up at this point, rather than trying to answer each one of those questions individually, and this is probably directed more to Chief Purcell. One question that I've been asked a number of times is, is there going to be some kind of traffic control device put in at the intersection between Cedar Lane and Horton Road? Either a faraway stop sign, or temporary stoplights, or anything of that nature. People are concerned about turning left onto Horton Road from Cedar Lane, and we're wondering if there's any thought about how that's going to be accomplished. You have any comments?
Nope.
Okay. Take it as it comes, huh? All right.
Thank you. Councilperson Rocky?
I've already figured out my traffic pattern for how to get to the hospital from the east side of the river, where I don't have to make any left turns. So I've decided to go to work on Cedar River Parkway, home from work on Lover's Lane, because I don't want to make a left-hand turn if I don't have to, because it's going to be a bit of a mess. So, like Brent said earlier, we'll have to take responsibility for how we drive and how we get where we need to be. I think, you know, the assassination attempt, I, you know, I have been thinking a lot about that. I, unfortunately, I don't know that I'm surprised by people's behavior anymore after doing what I do for a long time, but I think that it was very sad, and I think one of the things that made me the most sad was hearing about the person who was killed, and how he lived in harmony with his neighbors, even though they were politically opposed. They were kind to each other and helpful to each other, and good neighbors regardless of their political leanings, at least those were the reports I heard from the news, and I thought, you know, that's exactly how we're supposed to be. And it's unfortunate. I also, I also don't like listening to speculation about what was going through the mind of someone who does a heinous act like that. As someone who's an advocate for people with mental illness, most mentally ill people are not violent, and you're much more likely to be victimized as a person with mental health problems than you are to commit a crime. And so I always, I worry about just the stigma that's attached to having a mental health problem, and, you know, what it does to people who have those problems, and most people are not violent. On a happier note, one way that we can all get together this weekend is go to Heritage Days, or at least go to the parade, if you're not into paintball and et cetera. But the committee does a great job every year of trying to make these, most of these activities are family-friendly and are free, and that's hard to find these days. And so everything kicks off Friday afternoon. There's a classic car show, there's great music, and then all day Saturday. Then there are a few things on Sunday. The New Horizons Band's going to be playing Sunday night. Ms. Blake, my band director from fifth grade, they're very excited about getting to perform, so take your mosquito repellent if you go to that. But please show up. Jen and I are going to be selling beer tickets from noon to two on Saturday, and I'm pulling a shift at Bingo to make sure people don't steal any prizes before they're legitimately won, so it should be fun. So please come, and it looks like we're going to have great weather, fortunately, so knock on wood. But hopefully, everybody will come.
Councilperson Wolf?
The community also had a great loss with the, with the death of Suzy Muller Hagan this week, and so I just, I got to go to Israel, Egypt, and Jordan with her in college, and had the joy of getting to know her, and what a joy she was to the community. I just wanted to give a, that our thoughts are with her and her family, or her family, and that I will be at Get Roasted tomorrow from eleven to twelve-thirty to discuss any council business.
Thank you. Guest councilperson.
I'd just like to thank Brent for the invitation to be here. You know, we've, my wife and I have been residents of Waverly Home for over twenty-four years. We've been business owners in town for over fourteen years. We've just come to really appreciate this community, have a deep love and appreciation for this community, appreciate the opportunity to learn more about it. I'll tell you that I did not know a whole lot about city government and how it operates, so appreciate the opportunity to kind of get a better understanding, and really just appreciate you all for the role that you guys have in making this a wonderful place. And we've raised three kids here, and just couldn't be more happy and blessed to be here, so appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you. You have in front of you in a newspaper edition, this is Mr. Wurger the Younger. Why is this distributed to you? It's about the commission statewide committee he serves on for disability rights. And I want to give full support to Councilperson Jones's comments. I really appreciate that. Those were impactful, and I would summarize them by saying, Waverly, be kind. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moving adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say yep.
Yep.
All those opposed, go home. That passed unanimously. Thank you, everybody. See you at Heritage Days.